Welcome to the Tuesday, June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three Mount Lebanon Planning Board. Uh, we'll have a call to order. Roll call, board members, Rebecca Griffith.
Here.
Dave Hornacek.
Here.
Clint Roundsfall.
Here.
John Schraut is not here. Andrew George, myself here. Our municipal staff, Dan Diceroth.
Here.
Ian McMeans.
Here.
Greg Warden.
He's not here, he's out at town at a training conference.
And our liaison, Steve Silverman. And Marilyn Oversthorner.
She emailed me that she was gonna join online.
Okay. Alright, we'll have a statement of public on public comments. The planning board will accept public comments with each agenda item. Please note that a repetition of comments made by previous speakers is not necessary for them to be considered. If a group of residents shares an opinion, we suggest that you select a spokesperson. Public comments is not the appropriate time for prolonged debate or for personal comments about or questions directed to fellow residents, the board members, municipal staff, or any developer. In consideration of everyone's time, we encourage residents making public comments to refrain from repeating comments made by previous speakers. For Zoom participants, if you wish to comment during the public comment agenda items, use the raise hand function. During the public comment agenda item, the chair will recognize you. When recognized, please be sure to unmute your microphone, or I'm sorry, your line, and announce your name and address for the record. If you have multiple or complicated comments, you are welcome to submit them to us in writing. We ask you to hold your remarks to five minutes and we'll let you know, we'll let you know when your time is up. We appreciate your efforts to be respectful and ask that the audience refrain from any behavior that is disruptive or might intimidate free speech. With that, uh, do we have an approval of the minutes from the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
Rebecca Griffith, I'll recommend a motion to approve the minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, planning board meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, with that, we'll move to old business. Uh, we have a note that following two agenda items both pertain to the Black Oak Hill project. Discussion of the agenda items can occur together with separate motions made for the subdivision plan and the land development plan. Our first item is the request for preliminary approval for a subdivision plan. De Cega LLC is requesting to subdivide the property at three nine seven Old Gilkison Road into twelve parcels. This would accommodate the Black Oak Hill Land Development Plan submitted by De Cega LLC to construct ten single-family attached homes on the property. Our second item is a request for preliminary approval for a land development plan. De Cega LLC has submitted the Black Oak Plan to con- to, yeah, I'm sorry. The Black Oak Plan to construct ten single-family attached homes on approximately two point seven acres located at three ninety-seven Old Gilkison Road in the R three zoning district. Single-family attached dwellings are used by right in the R three zoning district. Uh, do we have a presentation for discussion?
Good evening, my name is Chris Peters and with MDM, here on behalf of the applicant, De Cega USA. Uh, with me this evening, Matt Dearson, he's the architect of record for the project. Uh, we have provided to you over the last couple of months, uh, the subdivision plan, the law consolidated, or I'm sorry, the land development plan. Uh, we've been through a couple of review cycles with Gateway and we see the review letters down to maybe four or five pages of what I would consider mostly housekeeping. Uh, some things we need to address on the plan, minor items, as well as the request for the modifications that, uh, the engineer highlighted that we should possibly discuss maybe this evening. Um, with respect to the modification request on the sidewalks along north Gilkison Road. Um, is there anything in particular that, uh, we can address tonight aside from the engineer comments, any committee members with uh, questions or comments on the plan or requests for verification on anything we've
Can you move that over just a little bit so we can get it on the camera?
I kinda went out of order there, Dan, do you have a letter?
Um.
I do.
Sorry about that.
You can like the insurance, whatever, whatever you wanna do. You want me to go first?
Ian.
Either way, it's fine. Uh, they can, uh, Chris can finish and then we can have Dan.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no worries.
But I don't have anything else.
Sure, as Chris has stated, uh, we have been through some review cycles related to the plan. I do have a most recent, uh, uh, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and three uh, report on the, uh, remaining items on the development. I'll just try to highlight some of those items. Um. They have, uh, provided us under part seven design guidelines. They have, uh, provided materials, uh, under separate cover from the architect. So, uh, the, those, that information has been submitted. Uh, the, uh, under part eight, uh, requirements related to all the districts, they've addressed all the comments. Um, the review procedure for major subdivisions under chapter sixteen, part four. Uh, they, uh, still have to go through upper St. Clair approval, so they, they've acknowledged that. Uh, and the PennDOT roadway dedication. So, uh, both of those things are acknowledged and would be a part of final approval. And then under chapter sixteen, part five, uh, procedure for land developments. Uh, there's some housekeeping items related to, uh, the items on the plan as has been mentioned. And really, it comes down to, uh, some more, some more comments related to the, uh, sidewalks and the required improvements. So they have made a, uh, request, uh, request for modification, uh, on the shade trees. And they've also made a request for, uh, a modification related to the, uh, sidewalk, uh, to narrow the sidewalk down. And I've just commented that, that these, based upon the existing conditions that are out there, that these probably should be given consideration, but we can allow, uh, the engineer to, to respond to that or give us maybe a little bit more information on that. I did comment, uh, that, that some of the grading, under some of the grading, uh, it's clear that there's mine voids on the property, uh, that were identified and there's some undercutting that's required and I'm just assuming that developers are aware of that and is planning to deal with those issues.
The, uh, the mine issue that was identified by the geotech, it's our understanding there's an insurance program in Pennsylvania and it's quite common for homes to participate in that insurance, uh, program. It might be.
Yeah. So.
We're gonna extend the acknowledgement of that condition and the insurance issue towards the homeowners as they came in to purchase.
Okay, we're, we're also gonna probably want that on the recorded plan.
Okay.
A notification of those, you know, because it was clearly called out. Um, there, there is there, there, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but there are developers that are all actually grouting mine voids before building residential construction in certain areas. And it sounded like in the report I read from Artuso that he recommended that. So if it's not being done, we're gonna have to put notification on the plan. So you'd probably just let them know that. Um, there's a number of, uh, minor stormwater comments, but I think we're in general agreement that the plan on stormwater meets the, uh, the ordinance requirements. Um, it'll also require PennDOT approval of the connection of the stormwater. So that'll be a part of the H O P permit that we comment on. Um, do you have any update on traffic from PennDOT?
Uh, we're in the mid, middle of our first review cycle with PennDOT and expect those plans to be back in this week.
Do you expect any issue with your access points or they're okay with those?
No, they had no, uh, comments with respect to the access points. It was, um, more about planned presentation to meet their new, uh, strike off letter and the sample H O P plans that they're expecting, that's their follow. So it was, um, again, I use the term housekeeping, but we arranged it.
So. So we're not gonna see new access points, okay? Cause that's important if, if the, the board considers preliminary approval tonight. And then under general comments, there's just my normal comments related to sewage planning, uh, which we could get started if, if this plan moves past, uh, preliminary approval or gets, gets a preliminary, preliminary approval. You'll have the normal N P D S permit, we've already talked about PennDOT permits. And then there's other items associated with the development if it continues to move along. So, Chris, do you want, do you wanna at least talk about, or can you show us anything related to why you need the modifications?
I would like to, if I, I know you don't like to accept the new information tonight, but I felt this was, was, um, best explained in person. The issue is uh, with respect to a, a about sixty-foot section of sidewalk along, uh, north Gilk, uh, north side of Gilkison Road. There's an existing three-foot sidewalk there serving the municipality of the bus stop. Um. We'd like to extend that about six, sixty feet. And then give me this copy of what brings and neighborhood by that six-foot wide sidewalk in that area. What was that, a Google Earth picture of that area looking at it from, uh, looking towards. As we currently have it shown, there, there's a slope coming down, uh, towards the shoulder there that's at about three to one slope. And we can squeeze that three-foot sidewalk in there without chasing up the slope with any excavation. For us to expand that to a six-foot wide sidewalk, we would be chasing up the slope. And what you'll see on that, uh, Google Earth image, um, there are, uh, there's a big tree dead center, uh, that is literally, uh, dead. That's gonna come out with any, in, in any, uh, case. But to the right of that is a larger canopy tree that will be impacted by any grades that we would take up that slope. And if you see the, uh, thirty-five mile an hour speed limit sign just to the left of that is another small sapling that will be impacted by us chasing that slope, uh, to, to get a slope in there above that six-foot wide sidewalk. So our, I guess what we weighed against it was we can provide a three-foot sidewalk in there where there's already a three-foot sidewalk uh, and have a, a less impact. Where we can put the six-foot sidewalk in and we're taking out a canopy tree, a, a healthy sapling and putting in some, uh, slow stabilization material for maybe nine or twelve feet of grading.
Or you could put a, or you could put a three-foot cheek wall along the sidewalk.
We could, that would be cost prohibitive.
That's, come on. Sixty feet of three-foot high wall? It's cost prohibitive? Come on.
I'll just note from a process standpoint, um, that the commission has final say on any waivers or modifications, but the planning board serves as a recommending body. So, um, the planning board, whether or not, you know, any approvals are granted at the planning board stage are always contingent on the commission granting waivers and modifications at the end when actual final approval is sought. Um, but the planning board does have the ability to make a recommendation on proposed waivers and modifications, but it is a recommendation. So, I'll note that. Um, just out of sheer curiosity, Chris, um, so you've, you've talked about the six-foot sidewalk, but then it kinda tapers down into a five-foot sidewalk for more or less the rest of your development?
PennDOT.
Yeah, but. Right, right, but I'm, I guess I'm saying, my, my question is, you know, you're saying it's three feet at the curb around the corner of Cedar. Does, what does five feet do? Does, does five and six do the same or does that extra foot save you a little bit on the slope?
Um, saves you a little bit on the slope. But that.
That two to one cuts off?
It would, yes, on the grade.
Those are wonderful contours, it looks a lot more exaggerated than it is.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to.
It's not that, it's not that steep, I mean, looking at the picture, it's not that steep. You could probably cheat a two to one slope in there and still get in a, a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Uh, that, what, what kind of tree is it? Cherry? A big one?
I, I guess, let me ask a question first. Where's PennDOT falling with, with respect to the signs that you have to move? If they, who's, where they wanna put them and they just scooting them over, offsetting them exactly so it's on the opposite end of the six-foot sidewalk or? I'm looking at the thirty-five mile per hour sign, I'm trying to figure out exactly.
We need one of the new locations for that, for sure. We've not had a, that conversation with PennDOT.
I, I guess my opinion, my humble opinion, is that, um, for safety sake, I know there's an existing three-foot sidewalk that's kinda running around along the radius. Um. That is problematic. This is a turning lane. Thirty-five miles per hour, nobody ever goes thirty-five. I, I'm sure, it's kinda like Indianapolis. Five hundred there sometimes, so I'm a little bit concerned about safety in squeezing pedestrians or ADA, um, pedestrians further into the street or more confined. Um, and if we're gonna put PennDOT signs on the opposite side of a three-foot walk or a five-foot walk or a six-foot walk, I'd rather it be as wide as possible so they have they have immovability as much as possible. Um, I understand the tree disturbance, um, it's two and a half inch caliper. Um. I would rather, from a developer's standpoint, I'd rather pay for a couple of new trees and stabilization, um, than the safety of issue. And also, I agree with Dan, uh, a three-foot wall, you know, you're, you're talking versiloque wall at that point. That's, that's not gonna break the bank versus, uh, housing development, residential development, so. I'd like.
We put a three-foot wall, we put more than a three-foot wall along Washington Road when we put the sidewalk extension from the, uh, from downward, uh, what's there now. Um. Restaurants and the coffee shop. It was the.
Oh, um.
And we go up on the right-hand side up before we.
Oh, like just past Primaeus?
Yeah, past the Galleria on the right-hand side if you're coming up. I mean, we, that's an example where we put in a small wall to incorporate the sidewalk. I mean, it has to be done some points.
Right before you can like speak in the alley and up the hill, yeah.
And to Ian's point, yes, it comes down to the commission as far as their final approval, A or N, eh? But my recommendation is to explore something of this nature. Um. Obviously, working with PennDOT to what the best solution would be, but to, I'd rather err on a conservative towards safety than, um, to put it bluntly, to, to worry about a cost for a three-foot wall or replacing trees, even replacing trees of two to one, um, count or whatever it would be. Um, I'd rather err with a little bit more safety, so. That's just my opinion, that's just what I am on the board, so.
Many people live here ultimately, they could use that sidewalk to walk all the way to the park, to the main park.
Yeah. So, um, I, I just wanted to provide that as some feedback.
Then your second one was trees? Issue of the trees, right? Was that the second request for the modification?
Now, uh, yes, there slope issue against the, the right-of-way and the back of curb. The ordinance reads to have the new shade trees within the right-of-way. Uh, but we do have a, a rather steep slope and in some cases, no room between the right-of-way and the back of curb along Old Gilkison. And those areas, I propose we provide those shade trees just outside the right-of-way, as close as we can to the road in the middle of that slope. Uh, there's just, there's physically no room in there to do it along a good bit of that. Where we do have room, we are going to provide it. Where we don't have room, we'd like to have them in the property close to the right.
The amount, the amount that you require, just.
Correct, we're providing the correct amount for ordinance. We just can't quite get them in the right-of-way. I think meeting the intent.
I'll say one, one reason of the intent, and I understand the right-of-way of Gilkison Road is, or Old Gilkison Road is very oddly shaped. It's very narrow, um, you know, in some points it just is kind of right at the curb. It doesn't extend into front yards or yards like in other streets. But, um, one of the intents is that because we have a public works crew that maintains all twelve thousand street, municipal street trees, um, maintaining trees within the right-of-way, we don't then need permission from private property owners to go onto their property to maintain their trees. Um, so I think with the modification, I think we'll just wanna, once presented to the commission, need a clarification on are these trees gonna be maintained by the property owners in perpetuity? Or are they gonna become the responsibility of the municipal public works crew? In which case we will need some kind of maintenance easement for that section of the property so that we have access to it. Personally, I think it'd be easier if you're putting them outside the railway just to have them maintained by the private property owners. Um, cause then we're not getting into that question of, you know, public works came onto my property and did whatever maintenance on the trees. Um, we just know that, you know, the trees are on private property and they're private trees.
How can we most effectively communicate that? Um, is that something we should add to the plan or is that something handled in a, in a developer's agreement?
We could do it both ways, I think. I think if we note on the plan that they're gonna be private trees, um, that fulfill the intent, um, have it on the recorded plan. Um, and then also memorialize it within the developer's agreement as well.
We actually record some of the development.
Yeah, we, yeah, we record the landscaping plan anyway, so, yeah, we'll record that.
Okay.
Sooner you're gonna have an HOA, eh?
You are.
You just, maybe you modify your modification request to say that the trees are being maintained up to the by the age of.
And I think Dan mentioned this in his letter, but with the HOA, just prior to final approval with the commission, the solicitor will just need to review the HOA documents just to make sure the municipality doesn't have any exposure there.
When they are available, we.
Yeah. Yeah. One asking about subdividing after their foundations are laid? We're not doing that? So, they've presented both, um, you know, I'll say typically it's our staff's recommendation to, um, you know, approval and development plan, then have it come back once you actually lay your foundations and then do the subdivision plan, just in case you run into any kinda geotech stuff or whatever, something gets shifted by a foot or two. And, you know, all of a sudden, you've already established, you spent the money to go through the process to, you know, approve a subdivision plan, record a subdivision plan, and then all of a sudden you have a property line through someone's yard and you have to come in and switch where the property lines are. So, I'll say typically, that's our process, but, you know, you, it's up to you all, um, you know, when you actually wanna finalize it.
Uh, our surveyor recommended that we proceed.
That's, yeah, and that's, that's your choice and we can do it now and you can record the subdivision plan and have the lines there and just hope that's where the foundations get poured, or, or come back and tweak it later. Yeah.
Which they have needed to do in other conditions, uh, in other locations, but yeah.
It just costs you guys more money because you have to come back through the process, but that's your choice.
I understand, yeah.
Ian, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Uh, I have a question, can you provide a, just an anticipated timeline on some of the other contention approvals like PennDOT and maybe some other ones, where you're at?
PennDOT and, uh, N P D E S permit are certainly the biggest two. I would hope we have those wrapped up by August. In August. Before the end of summer. In September. Um, planning module, I mean, we, we have the, um, materials to just need the, uh, preliminary approval so we can get that going. And, uh, we did again have, uh, no changes to the access points and no substantive comments to the actual design. It was functionally housekeeping and making sure we had the plans presented the way they are now expected.
I would just like to, um, add if we do, um, decide to make a vote that we do make the final, uh, recommendation based on exterior finishes being submitted. Um, I would like to see the palette.
So, um, my name is Matt Dearson, I'm with Midland Architecture with, uh, in Pittsburgh. Um, the request that was made at the last meeting was, uh, building materials and, um, I went back to the elevations on which I had noted the materials in a general way. Um, as we discussed in the prior hearing, there may be some element of, of selection yet to be made. Um, our goal was to, was to satisfy the, you know, the requirements of what's presented for the planning board to the extent that we understand what that is. Do we have an actual palette of the final selected materials? We don't currently, I mean, we can, I, I guess my question is, are you saying that that would be a condition that we submit that subsequently? Or something that you'd wanna see now?
I would, I would wanna see it prior, like, prior to any subsequent approvals. Um, because you did note in your response letter about your color range on page, uh, the second page on, uh, seven oh five point one, point two, point four.
What?
Um, you noted.
In, yeah, in the context of, of relating to the adjacent properties as that section in the chapter seven requires. I think our goal was to, to demonstrate to you that our, you know, our current intent and our final intent will be to satisfy that sort of somewhat nebulous definition of corresponding to the adjacent properties. The adjacent properties are pretty widely varied. Um. I guess what I'm saying is like, we've done several submissions. I, I would love to not have to do another month's submission on siding samples that I just go get and show you. I, I mean, I'm not trying to be flip. I'm really just saying like, these are things that we really are in the process of determining.
Yes, and, and I totally get that, and I'm just saying before, we're preliminary right now, so.
Oh, for final?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. You scared me.
No.
Process standpoint, typically in the past, at the time, so this is preliminary approval right now with the planning board. It, assuming the project would get preliminary approval tonight, we have to come back to the planning board for a recommendation for final approval before moving on to the commission for final approval. So at that next planning board recommendation for final, typically in the past, we've had developers kinda bring in their siding samples. And we had one, um, that we recently recommended for approval that was a design-build concept and they kinda just brought in a whole box of, you know, here's the whole slate of palettes that people could choose from. It's gonna be one of these, and it was a range of beiges and browns and grays.
Going to enforce some, some limitations because they have to hang together, obviously, but, uh.
No, it makes sense.
No, that, that, that's fine, sorry.
Is providing that material some, is that something at the meeting?
That's what we've done in the past and actually I think that works pretty well because if any residents attend that meeting, then you can have them in the back and say, hey, if residents are interested in seeing what the potential color palette is, there's a, you know, box in the back you can kinda see with your eyes what they're gonna look like, cause showing them digitally on paper versus what you actually see with your eyes, the colors don't always translate, so. Um, yeah, I would say actually, I, I don't wanna speak for the board, but I think actually just bringing them into the meeting is probably the best way to do it, cause then people can look and touch and see them and we have some architects on the board who like to touch things, so. Is this all gonna just be straight block? Smooth base block, I guess, or what is?
Thought I could run away. Um, so the intention is that the block at the garage level is a ground base. Yeah, so, um, probably in a, in a, a more of a stone, uh, color range below the siding. And then the intent is that the brick is, is in a more traditional red brick color. But then brick obviously only occurs on the front, uh, old Gilkison elevation.
And I wanted to state, you know, for the record, that I appreciate the design because it's such a, the site design, cause it's, it's, and the architectural design. Um, but the, the site design, because it's so tight and, uh, Dan and I were discussing about the, the elevation constraints that you have. And I, and you're, you're threading the needle here with a lot of utilities and a lot of the stormwater management elements and what have you. So I appreciate the effort, let me just state that. Um, there were a couple of concerns that I'm sure you share with respect to the utilities on the backside of the property, coming down the hill, steep slope in the, as it's described on the survey, the loose stone wall. Steep slope in the, as it's described on the survey, the loose stone wall um that's still retaining some soil. In in that portion of the property. So it was a concern. I know that we're dealing with the the workmanship and the end of the day, you have to meet municipal standards. Especially for protecting old Gilkerson's road in the right of way. But it was something that caught my eye as a, just as a concern for that type of trenching. Um underneath this wall uh that has some kind of retaining value, not a lot, but a little bit. And then, you know, obviously working to the individual lots. So that was something that caught my eye. I don't really have a question because I know that this, it's an issue. It's a, it's a constraint that you have, but it's something that. I would be looking out for the property owner, that's something, hopefully they understand that they own those laterals. They will be responsible for them at the end of the day. Likewise, on the front side of the property or the state route side with the sanitary line, right over top of the stormwater BMPs. It's, you know, basically your, your sanitary trench is in the BMP at the end of the day. It's, it's some portions, not the entire reach, but portions of it. Did you get any pushback with the NPDS review or anything of that nature with respect to the BMP integrity?
Not yet.
Okay.
During the uh, when we were putting that design together, we did take a. Very close look at that and did work very hard to make it so that the sanitary laterals themselves would not encroach within the volume of BMP. I wanted to make sure that we were over the top of it. The BMP is a little oversized. So I, there, there's some, I think, some given, some wiggle room in there when we get into the field and find some field conditions where we make adjustments. But uh we did work very hard to make sure we had separation in there and that we would not be at the stone, storage stuff.
Okay, yeah, it's pretty, yeah, it's very tight. So that's, that was the two things that popped, the three things were obviously the NPDS. I don't know if Allegheny Plumbing, uh the Allegheny County would have any issues on that front. And just like you had mentioned, if you hit anything in the field, what kind of wiggle room you have. So uh again, I don't have a question. I'm just stating that there is concern because if everything is so tight, there will be a ripple effect if something does come up. Whatever that ripple effect, whatever that can have to be, so.
I believe we have about a foot of wiggle room to take that lateral off.
Okay.
And we would be clearing the, right, right now as it's designed, we're about right on it.
Yes.
Have room to go up uh to get over it and we do have some, I think some considerable drop down to that.
Okay.
Existence, so something to work.
Understand, okay. Thank you, that's all. Uh comments from the public? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, with that, do we have a uh an action?
Rebecca Griffith, I'll make a motion to grant preliminary approval to the subdivision plan of three nine seven Old Gilkerson Road. Conditioned upon developer addressing items noted in the engineer review letter dated May twenty six, twenty twenty three. And I don't believe we have any other additional comments from the board.
Oh, how about the uh waivers and modifications?
That's, that'll be part of the land development motions on the subdivision one, I think, where subdivision.
No additional comments, yeah.
No additional. Uh this Dave Hornet check in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion carries? Uh do we have a motion on the second action?
Uh this Rebecca Griffith. I'll make a motion to grant preliminary approval to the Black Oak Hill Land Development Plan at three nine seven Old Gilkerson Road. Conditioned upon the developer addressing items noted in the engineer, engineers review letter dated May twenty six, twenty twenty three. The developer receiving necessary approvals from all outside agencies and the comment from the board regarding um our recommendation not to. Uh approve the waiver on the sidewalk. Ian?
So I'd say, if I may kind of articulate this, just to make sure I have my notes correct for when we make the minutes. So uh you read the motion, then basically the planning board recommends the developer amend their sidewalk modification request. Um and note the ownership of the required shade trees on the recorded plan. That more or less summarize? Yeah.
Yes.
Just making sure I have it correct. Okay, cool.
All in favor?
Because the finishes will be addressed at the.
At the final.
Following meetings.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The question about next steps, um I believe the submission deadline for next month's planning meeting, it's next Tuesday.
It is, let me see here, it's a shorter turnaround for, yeah, yeah, it'll be next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Yep.
So if we were to have these plans revised to address the engineer's letters and the comments from this evening and change them to the preliminary or the final, it sounds like we're on track.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
That is correct, yes.
Expectation.
Yeah. Yep, yeah, and then, like we said, if you just bring the material samples. Um so actually, typically the planning board uh meets in a small discussion session down the hall in one of the meeting rooms, like a half hour in advance of that start of the formal meeting. Um so if you show up at six thirty with those materials, you can bring them back to the back room, planning board can take a look at them. The architects on the board can look, feel, smell, taste, whatever they want to do with the material samples. And uh, yeah, so then, and then we can have them out for the public at the meeting too. Yeah, and then do whatever they want. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our new business. We have a request for preliminary approval and recommendation for final approval for a subdivision plan. J L A B Beauty LLC is proposing a lot consolidation of three fifty and three sixty Castle Shannon Boulevard. From two lots on a single point four six acre lot. Uh do we have a letter from the engineer?
Yeah. Uh I have a letter dated uh June sixteenth, uh two thousand and twenty three. Uh this is a rather simple subdivision plan. The uh, there's been modifications made to this property uh that are basically. Building in nature, so being reviewed by the inspections department. Uh it was our recommendation that they uh complete this consolidation plan. The plan's been submitted by Scheffler and Company and really I just have some minor housekeeping comments related to. Uh signing and sealing the plan, ownership evidence, uh just some addresses that needed straightened up and really that's about it. It's a pretty simple plan. It's a good plan.
So have someone from Scheffler here to talk about it if we need to. Um and I will say, we did receive updated uh plans to the municipality this week, so um they've made some of those amendments.
Do you have anything you want to come to the podium?
Uh my name is Katrina Harmel. I'm with Scheffler and Company. I'm here on behalf of the applicants. Uh we, we addressed the comments uh and submitted those this morning, the ten copies of the uh of the consolidation plan that's been updated per those comments.
Comments?
No.
No? Okay, well, any public comment? Still not? Okay, with that, we have a, an action?
I'll make a motion to grant uh preliminary approval and recommend final approval to the subdivision plan at three fifty and three sixty Castle Shannon Boulevard. Conditioned upon the developer addressing items required to be completed to final approval noted in the engineer review letter dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty three. And any other comments from the planning board, which I don't think we had any.
Uh this Andrew George, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to our comprehensive plan update. Go ahead, Ian.
I'm sorry, continue, just for process standpoint. So because this is a simple lot consolidation plan. Um our ordinance gives us the ability to do both preliminary and recommend final at the same time. So as you heard me just tell the uh other folks, they have to come back for a recommendation for final. This one got preliminary and recommendation for final at the same time. So your next step is to submit for the commission to grant final approval. So we are able to skip a step in the process for these small plans. Yes.
Thank you. Hey, you have a comprehensive plan update?
We do, yes. Um so right now, the consultants are meeting with our three focus groups um to kind of have a midpoint in the process check in. Uh we are about a year into the eighteen month process. So after these three focus group meetings, um which one occurred last night, we have two more next week. Um then the consultants will start kind of crafting the proposed recommendations in the plan. Um and there will be some, I'll say, smaller public outreach, um you know, over the next uh few months, right, August into September. On, you know, getting responses to what the actual recommendations of the plan are. And then we will finalize the plan and uh bring it to the planning board for recommendation and then commission for approval by the end of the year. Uh so the process is going very well. Um I think we're pretty much done with our public surveying, but now it's more based, you know, getting feedback on the actual recommendations, which are being crafted now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, is there any citizen comments? Okay, well with that, our next meeting, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Mount Lebanon Planning Board is Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty three at seven P M. All municipal meetings now have a Zoom webinar component to enable residents to attend meetings either virtually or in person. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh this Dave Hornet check, I make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. We adjourn, thank you.